Second.
Motion by Mr. Locklear, second by JJ. All in favor?
Aye.
On the third page will say the minutes to the meeting of August 12th. When you've read them, we'll take a motion on those. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Jackson, second, Mr. Locklear. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. And then next item, superintendent's information.
First thing we have, and we have something in your packet about that, the information, we're hosting the second annual salute to the military event, and that will be this coming Friday. The information is there. What we do is recognize all of our military, those that have already served, and those that are currently serving, they can get into the game free, there'll be special music and recognition, coin toss by a former New York County graduate who was retired from the military, that sort of thing. Any active duty or retired military person with their ID can get in, free them and their family. All they have to do is just name their family members, so we're looking forward to participating in that again. The second item, I have a certificate from the Georgia Accrediting Commission. We've just entered SACS, and of course that's five years. The same thing with GAC, as long as we continue to meet their requirements. This is the state accrediting commission, and we are accredited with quality, which is the highest recognition that they have through their accreditation. And so at this time, I will hand them out, and Ms. Richardson is first, primary school, and we're glad Ms. Richardson is back after an absence with her husband's illness. And we have the elementary school from Miss Pipe way back in the corner there, that's why I won't make the way back, way through here. And then we have the middle school, Ms. Ham is in Atlanta, Amelia, and you will give that to Mr. Culpepper. And of course, the high school also. We appreciate our principals and their staff and faculty, what they do to continue to keep us accredited both for state level and on the national level. The information, a sick leave bank was brought up at the last meeting, and we've discussed it at our principal's meeting. Principals have gone back to discuss the idea with their faculty to just informally find out how many might be interested. Right now, the feedback is pretty much all positive. It's just that they would like to have a little more information. I have surveyed all of the schools in our RISA. We have seven of our 12 schools that have a bank. We have five that do not. Downloaded all their policies, plus a couple of others. And I think that our next step, what I told the principals is we'd have an actual survey that might have a little more info. And because in all of this, you're going to have to have enough people to participate, and generally it runs around 50 percent. And then we'll have to write a policy. Fortunately, on September the 19th, coming up very quickly here, we have this, our policy meeting where we're going to spend all day going through policies. And that's the next item there, D. And Marveen Brooks, that works with Harvin Hartley and Hawkins Law Firm, we contracted through the GSBA for her to go through, and she's actually already gone through all of our policies and has made recommendations. And our committee will be sitting down on the 19th and going through this all day long. And although I've asked Mitchell to be the board representative for that day, any board member can come. You can come and stay as long as you like. You can stay all day, part of the day. Hopefully we'll get through most of them. What this will involve is, is looking at those policies that they recommend we discontinue because they're already covered in state law, or it might be a policy that's outdated, or it might be a policy where some wording needs to be changed, and they've already made some recommended word changing for us to look at. No policy we're going to affect until it's brought back to the entire board, and you've been allowed to look at it and let it sit on the table and then vote on it. So this could take a couple of months, two, three months to go through all of this. It's hard to really put a timetable on it. But while we have our expertise here, because she is the policy writer, I thought we might ask her to help us develop a policy on the sick bank, as there's so many variables on each of them. And then we would have something more concrete for employees to look at and say, yes, that's something I'm interested in doing, or no, I'm not, because it has to be voluntary on their part. So that's kind of a process we are going through at this time with the sick bank. So don't have anything there for an action item tonight, because we need to do just a little more research and have specifics.
There were some concerns on the sick bank, but none of them, none of them are mandatory for employees to join, as I understand it correct.
That's correct.
So it's strictly voluntary whether they want to join or not. But if they don't join, I think there's like a five-year waiting period before they can join.
Right.
If they, if a teacher lets not to.
That's decided if we want five years.
That's right.
Right. It's how the policy's written.
Right.
Sure.
And a lot of systems use it where the teachers control the sick bank, not the administration or anybody else.
But it's a good one.
They have a administrative personnel that's over.
Right. Every, every one of them have a committee, and there are different ones, but the majority is made up of certified staff, teachers, some classified, and generally one administrator. And I think on every one of them that I've read, there's no appeal. That committee would be an important committee, because they make the decision. But that's why the policy has to be crafted carefully, because they need to know that it's a catastrophic event and kind of what the guidelines are.
If we're going to do it, let's do it right.
And so we can ask Marveen on the 19th to maybe work on the draft.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Maybe have something in place by next, next school year?
That's up to you guys. I mean, depending on what we bring back. Yeah, I mean, it could start first of the year. I think there's certainly enough time to get it done by then if you want to go ahead and move forward. The, the next, on E, we had already voted on the tax digest, but when Mr. Bennett went to take it to the tax office, they informed us that there was a line missing on the form that we ran in the newspaper. And although it made no difference in the amount of taxes that would be collected, and we're decreasing the military rate, we're going to have to run it again with that one line in there. So we will run it in the paper this week and next week. And because it has to be approved and seen before October, we're going to need to have a call board meeting somewhere this, this last full week in September. So you, you tell me what's the best date and time for you to meet. It can be any time of day. That will be the only agenda item we'll meet and just vote on it again.
Charlie, what was the, that one line?
It's called the Forest Land Protection Grant.
Was it our fault, or?
Well, they had a new form this year, and in my haste to get that military rate reduction in the paper, I had downloaded the correct computation form, but the five-year tax digest that I ran is one that I've used ever since I've been here, and this year it changed. And they had that line added in there and, I asked Rebecca for a waiver and some mercy, but she said, no, we have to do it over again. And so I'm going to have to ask y'all to do that. We need a meeting on or after the 26th, because I'm going to run it in the paper this week, and then it'll have to be in there two weeks, so on or after the 26th. But she couldn't wait until the next board meeting. She said that would put her off.
Now, I thought we were going to run it from 12 to the 19.
Well, it'd just have to run at one time, but then it has to be two weeks after it ran. So.
Okay.
So it has to be on or after the 26th.
27 is a Friday, so 26 is Thursday.
Can we do it on 26, y'all?
Yeah, we can do it on 26.
26, what time do you go get it? Is that planned?
At your pleasure.
5:36, call it now. 5 o'clock?
Yeah.
5:36?
And Frank, I've spoken with him. He said anytime that we would be done with him. So 26, 5 o'clock, call board meeting for purposes and voting on the tax digest. It will still be at the reduced rate of 16.96. The next item, I understand this information is the GSBA conference in Atlanta. What we did, we attempted to get rooms where the conference is being held. They were out of rooms, all rooms. And so we went ahead and secured rooms at the Wyndham Atlanta Galleria, which is 2.6 miles from where the meeting's going to be held. We reserved them. We had reserved one for everyone, didn't know who wanted to go. Some of you I know have been the last couple of years. That's a, that's a great way to pick up those six hours of training. The Harvard and Hartley Law Conference, if you see that, and there is, is on the, they call it the E. Freeman Leverett School Workshop. And then that's also for board attorneys as well. They have a separate one in the afternoon. So if you would let me or Ms. Wanda know if you're, if you're going to go and which workshop you'd like to participate in, we have rooms reserved for you to stay through the entire conference. But if you just want to spend one night and go to that law workshop the next day, then just let her know we'll cancel the other rooms. And I apologize that we couldn't get them there, but I know even, and when I met with the other superintendents for our RISA, Lounds County had called the day of, the, the opening up, and couldn't get in. So some of these systems apparently reserve them in advance of when they say you can reserve them. Just call and get them.
Isn't there also a workshop over way across doing this, the same thing with law, school law? I got a little card off that.
It won't be this one. It won't be this one. This is the big one. They, they do this in December, and then they do it again in the summer. Like when you went, just passed up for new board training, and I think you went to the law workshop, didn't you?
Yes.
So this will be an update, and it will get you the required six hours. So again, you don't have to answer right now, but if you know that you want to go for the law workshop, or if you see there, there are a couple of other workshops. There's a student achievement workshop, a board leadership workshop. Just call back if you, if you would sometime this week, and let Ms. Wanda know we get you registered for that, and for how many nights that you need to stay. Again, we have, the rooms on hold right now. And any questions about that? Okay. Mr. Sermon's, I'm down to action items, okay. On action items, A, security upgrade to the elementary primary school? Right. We don't have anything in, in your board packet on that, because we were still finalizing. We were, we were thinking that we just have to put under information, but we have enough bids in now where we could move forward. I, I can tell you this, we haven't selected. We do have, you know, parent low bidders, and it will, it's going to cost somewhere between eight and 10 grand. And what this will do, will purchase a buzz-in and camera system for the front doors of the primary and elementary school, similar to what we have at the Millen High School. It will add that extra security capacity at both of those schools. And I would like to recommend that we go ahead and do that. It's one, one more line of security, so that all of our schools will be pretty much similar in those measures.
Is the low bid the same company that we use for the high school and elementary?
Not right now. We found another company that just got their bid in today, that sent one to Jerry on the, the door hardware, and it was a couple thousand dollars cheaper. So still a quality, you know, company.
So we need to go ahead and act on that tonight, now?
Yes, sir, if you would.
Okay, board's pleasure. We'll enter kind of a motion on that. And yep, where's the, the elementary primary school?
Second.
Second. Motion from JJ, second from Mr. Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Motion carried.
Thank you for that, and we'll, we'll get started on that just as quickly as, as those vendors can come and do that. Time will just be in order at the doors.
I'd be at local board training, individual and whole.
What you see in there, you know, each year, we have to just send a plan into the DOE. We can change the plan at any time. So I can change it based on what you tell me this week. If you're going to go to Atlanta, to the school law workshop or one of the others, let me know. We'll change it before we send it out. We just have to approve a plan tonight. If you know you're not going to go to the Atlanta workshop, there will be training scheduled later at Lenox for those six hours. And just let me know that, that you prefer to go to that. It won't be a law workshop. It'll, it'll be on some other subject. Mr. Chambers, Thursday I met with him, he, he wasn't sure just right now what it might be. And then there are other trainings that we could have. It could be on finance. It could be on whatever you'd like for it to be on. Later in the year, we will come together for the three hours of whole board training. Right now, we put that down as, as Board and Community Relations. And we used Harold Chambers last year to do that training here. I think we did it on Saturday, on Saturday morning. So that's just a plan. If, if, if you're okay, we'll just go ahead and approve it. If we change, and you were to call Wanda or me and say, I'm not going to go to the law workshop. I will go whenever they have it. Lenox, we don't have that yet. We'll just change that and send it in. If you wind up not doing either one of those and want to take some online training, they have, they have those online courses. They're two hours each, so you can take three online classes. There are several different ways to get those hours.
I'm not willing to take action on that.
We need to at least approve this plan and say, well, it's a plan. It might change, and it's okay if it changes, as long as at the end of the year, you have the required number of hours, the nine hours.
So we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion on the local board training.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Early, second from Mr. Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Okay, carries. Our next item is fundraisers.
Okay, the, the fundraisers and field trips, we might want to do those again?
Okay.
They're in there for each school. There's a loose one that's in there that came in late today. It was inadvertently left off, and it's a couple of field trips for the high school art class. And then I just have a handwritten note. There was, on the elementary school, they wanted to add snow cones. They do that a couple of times a year as a fundraiser for one of the grade levels. What grade level is that?
Fourth.
Fourth grade? So if you, if you don't mind just adding those two things, two field trips from the art, and those are both to Valos Estate. Those are both at Valos Estate, and then the snow cones at, at the school.
Okay, we need a motion on the fundraisers and field trips.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Strickland, second, Mr. Locklear. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is Perkins budget.
Mr. Ford, go on. Mr. Hunt, here. A lot of systems are going to what they call a virtual field trip. Instead of leaving the classroom, they do it online through the computer. And we've looked at that, or we've thought about that, some of the students are doing that. They're doing away with field trips entirely. Called it money crunches.
Right.
Just a lot of field trips in, you know, for a school year. I know when I was a teacher, I loved field trips too, but I'll, but you know, you've got to think about instructional time, too.
No, we've not discussed virtual field trips. I don't know, you know, at our principal's meetings, we, we haven't. Unfortunately, right now, with transportation budget, we, we're in really good shape. And so futile for the trips, that it's not a problem.
How about bus drivers? Are we okay with bus drivers, all the, all this, Ben?
Yeah, we, usually the, the field trips and everything, you know, the, well, a lot of these are, you know, are required for, you know, for games of work and that sort of thing.
I have no problem with those.
And, you know, we've gotten some of the, some of the teachers and that sort of thing that have their CDLs, and we don't use them on our regular routes. And so we're fine with the bus driving capacity and the, the amount of buses. We've been fortunate to be able to have some spare buses that we have at our disposal and use throughout the year. So.
Mr. Bennett, has to get creative.
Yeah, we do. I mean, you know, after CRCT, they, they do have some several trips, you know, sometime, and we just, we just get it done, you know? So we call, call, call in everyone to help out, and we seem to have made a big last couple of years' time.
Okay, I thought we'd go to item E, Perkins budget.
Mr. Moore submitted this. This is a small part of the CTA budget, these funds. And you, I'm sure you probably had time to go ahead and look through and see how the money's being spent. It just has to be board approved.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a, a motion from Mr. Jackson, second from JJ. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item, personnel and contract services. Do we want to carry, do all A, B, C, and D as one? Or like, quite like individual?
We have a couple of questions that we want to ask, but this is probably an executive session to ask.
Okay. Now, do we need to move executive session in front of this thing, and move this for apples?
Probably as to A, yes.
B. After A.
A.
So go ahead with that, go ahead with this.
We can go ahead with B, C, and D.
Oh, okay.
If you are too.
All right.
I'd rather you make, go ahead and make a motion. It'll be in the agenda, and then let's just go in line.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move executive session prior to personnel contract services.
Okay, we have a motion on favor, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we need to go right into executive session now? All right, so we need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Locklear, second by Mr. Strickland. All, any favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Go ahead and take your session and fly back in. You know, Mr. Sermon's, students hear from Mr. Sermon's class, the teacher taking.
Mr. Strickland will be glad.
You got the camera for that, right?
A, B, C, and D. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, motion carries. Okay, our next item is financial items, Mr. Trump.
Oh, okay. We are, we're getting some banks, running the financials. We're at 16 percent of the year completed in August. You need a copy of it? Should we, did we get it in?
Yeah, it's in there.
About four, 12. Four, 12.
We, nothing major to report that was, we're lucky it needed to be mentioned, other than everything's going very good. This month, the month of September is the, is the big month. We will finalize last year's financials, upload the states, you know, the financials for this year, and finalize most of the federal grant completion reports. So we'll be finishing none of the, so probably have more to report next month, but this month is just rocking along.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Trump? No, we appreciate it, Charlie. Thanks. Next public comment? We have one signed up for public comment. Ricky Ganna?
First phone, Mr. Strickland. You have nothing to do with this, but if you must not hear me, that has to change your husband, and I want you to know that, and I want the board to know that. That's how this should have no reflection on Mr. Richardson. You want six, I've got a plan, God, after next week, we enroll our kids at school. One into the middle school, one into the primary school. Fill out the enrollment package, we can proof of the, 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 the bill. See, most of all has not asked for nothing. We, with the primary school, first edition, during summer, we filled out, filled out another one in the house, filled out another one at home, and I think I missed one enrollment package. But paperwork is, we're not just going over and over sending from the primary school. We got one of those saying, we need a proof of honesty. Still, we just, we drove you shit, and it don't happen. Filling out paperwork, when I, when me and my wife had sex in Denver, sometimes filling out same paperwork, all the same study, same time, just takes away from our, child, I love. Ms. Bean, I believe I talked to you. I'm sorry I put you on the spot, but like I told Ms. Bean, I said, this is unreal. If they can't keep it up. First time I filled it out. First time I filled it out free, the good, good, you know, second time I almost started charging fifty dollars a sheet. I was just taken away from my school time. That, uh, there's another issue come up. Like I said, Miss Rich was outside about her husband. I want to make that clear. Now, my children or my stepchildren, they come from Douglas. She was retained back to Kitty Gordon. I asked them, cause I was told that she was being pulled out of Miss Fisher's class. Cause IEP or EIP, I can't keep them straight, they'll keep them. That, cause she was retained, that she would have to remain in that class. But first, I was dead set against it. I'm not, I, I called other school districts. I didn't mention no names, no nothing, and I talked to them. Ain't a lie, I called Atlanta and talked to Miss Bull, Miss Cooper. She is the Georgia Expert Analyst for the State of Georgia Governor's Office. And so we finally agreed that it be moved. Then going off test results have from September twelve, two thousand and twelve. A doctor don't even use test results as a reference. They retest them. We got a phone call today and they said, she's got to be removed, staying in there. She's got to stay in there cause she's retained. I said, is this county policy or state policy? And Miss Rich was, she was taking care of that, that being known, the reflection on her. But they could not ask me. So what did I do? I hung up the phone, called the, it's not a state policy, it's county policy. Oh, she's got to stay in there. So we finally agreed, we see that it's actually doing good. We get a phone call back, said they retested. They want to move it. I said, no, you're not moving my child. You're not playing musical chairs with my student, with my child. And I explained to Miss Rich, from Miss Patton, I said, if my child does something wrong, I'll be on, be on my child, get that situated. And the school does something wrong, like repeating the paperwork, wanna play musical chairs with a child, my child, anybody's child, I will be up for that, we'll see what's going on. I never knew what it was like being a parent to this year. And I am one hundred percent for my children and my children's education. Cause I was sent an unscored to learn how to play. And I want to get the best education I can get. I prefer it over and over again as unreal. But one letter said that we didn't have the preference. And this one, I went to the middle school and got, like, July twenty-sixth, it was due. And so it had come in the month of July. I, I went to the middle school and got a copy of it today. Why would I do it for one school and not other one I done enrollment papers?
Uh, it's our policy to listen to public comments and act on it. It is a paper meeting, but, um,
My mother's gonna be.
Right. We appreciate you coming to support and, 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 and it's not what we want.
Alright, thanks very much.
Yes, sir. Is there any other businesses we need to take care of tonight? If not, I'll ask for a motion for a German?
Somebody.
Second.
Mr. Strickland, motion, Mr. Locklear, second, all in favor?
Uh.